Okay.
The moonlight wasn't on.
It's the light is blue.
It is on now. Oh, Jay, it was not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, so yeah, I think he's, line thirty-five, it says the length of school days, but it was...
The late end to this school year, I think, was the majority.
Yeah.
Was, was the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. I have... Okay. Okay, on page seventeen of our packet, line one ninety-four, it wasn't the board that decided to remove the energy drinks, it was the committee, the wellness committee, supported the removal of energy drinks for students from bus to bus. So it was the board, it was the committee, and they supported it, because the committee can't make the final decision, the board has to make the decision to change the policy. And we haven't done that yet.
Did direct my interview items to change?
To change it, but that hasn't, we have to approve it. The board has to approve the policy. Right. The other thing is, line two thirteen, the solar farm, I don't, was that from that last meeting?
No, I did, I clarified it, so, um, other, a clarification was made that previous discussion of a solar farm would have been located at the district all land in the bottom mile hills. I think that's kind of how we...
It was a follow-up to public work.
Yeah, it was a follow-up to correspondence.
Okay. All right, I just didn't remember that one.
Because it's at the very end.
Okay.
Yeah, and one ninety, line one ninety, one eighty-nine and ninety, talking about our facilities committee, how we did discuss the emergency generator cost and location. I think we should state that that was, that's not, that it's the potential generator, it's the generator that could potentially be installed at some point.
Okay, we're good?
Good.
Anything else? Okay. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Katrina? Yes. Josh? Yep. Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie? Yes. All right, good. All right, we still have non-public open if you have a question or comment?
Public comment.
I mean, public comment open.
Suppose I'd like to make my first question.
Sure.
Thank you. You're gonna have to excuse me, I don't normally do this with notes, but, kind of gonna go off the cuff here. Good afternoon, thank you all for being here, I appreciate the opportunity to give a public comment. My name is Jason Hebert, I'm a parent of three Stratford School students, actually I guess I could say two now, one of them just graduated eighth grade. I want to make it clear that I'm here tonight as a parent, as a concerned parent, and not as an attorney. I don't represent anyone, there's no legal action pending, I'm here only as a parent. The reason I say that, as I've spoken with the superintendent before, Rob knows that I am actually a licensed junior attorney, so that's, that's not why I'm here, I'm here as a parent. What I'm requesting tonight is a freeze, a freeze on all PTO activities. I would like you to freeze from taking any money from the PTO. I would like a freeze on all events, PTO events, use of the library for meetings, the SSPTO email, and if the SSPTO dissolves, I would like you to not take the money. Now, the duration of this, I'm not saying forever, at all, I'm not saying, I have no issues with the PTO, I have no, I take no pleasure in coming here and doing this. In fact, we, we volunteered, my, my wife and I volunteered to participate in the PTO, to assist the PTO, and unfortunately, it's devolved into this weird situation of irregularities. Now, the three reasons, the three main reasons why I'm bringing this to you is first and foremost, the PTO environment is ripe with confusion, and I'll be honest right now, chaos. Second, there's blurred lines of leadership. Third, there's possible litigation coming towards the PTO. I'll start with the confusion topic. Here in New Hampshire, PTOs are highly regulated, charities are highly, highly regulated, they fall under the Attorney General's office, then it goes to the Department of Justice, and then it goes to the charitable trust unit. I pulled a list of registered charities here in Stratford, and what I have is, let's see, I got the Stratford Historical Society, I've got the Stratford Learning Center, I've got the Stratford Library Association, and I've got the Stratford Rec Sports. All of these are registered entities, I don't see the PTO on here. Now, maybe it's not a charity, I did look online at the IRS, it does appear to be a 501(c)(3) charity, so I don't really understand why it wouldn't be registered. So this is some of the confusion. Additional confusion lies in earlier this month, there were elections. The PTO voted by almost two-thirds majority for new leadership, new board officers, doesn't look like that's gonna happen. Some emails have been exchanged between the incoming board officers and the outgoing board officers, majority of the officers have actually already left, and I believe there's only one remaining. It doesn't appear like bank accounts are gonna be turned over, and like, the SSPTO name is gonna be turned over. I could be wrong, I hope I'm wrong, but as of July first, according to the bylaws, July first, the new team, the new board officers is supposed to take effect. So that's, that's the confusion part. Now I'm gonna talk a little bit of blurred lines of leadership. For me as a parent, it's hard to see where the PTO stops and where the school begins, and I'll give you an example. Earlier this year, I was alerted by several parents of possible irregularities. I'm trying to be general here, so please, please bear with me. I reached out to the superintendent, and he, he sent me an email back, and I've got here, and, well worth it, perfect, I have zero complaints with this email, and I, in fact, I responded with it, to this email with, "Perfect, that's exactly what I wanted." Let me, let me just read a couple lines out of it. "The PTO operates separately from the school district, and at this time, I'm unaware of a teacher or administrator being active member of the organization." Cool, okay, no problems. "Second, Natalie, Jeff, and I are not members, with this in mind, I cannot have my administrators attend or get involved with PTO internal business." Awesome, I responded to him, great, I understand, no problem, thank you, sir. That was on May eighth, on May twelfth, these are the meeting minutes from the PTO. The meeting minutes say, there was a vote, people that were there, the president explained, it was the teachers, the deans, as well as the executive board, they all voted. Rob, the superintendent, did not, because he's not on the board, the deans are declining to vote from now on. This directly contradicts what the superintendent said, so I don't know which one, is, are there some sort of voting that's taking place on school, school grounds during learning hours, or is, or as the superintendent said, is that not actually happening? These are not my words, these are the meeting minutes from the May twelfth PTO meeting. So there's confusion there. And, and that's the blurred lines of leadership, where we don't know where the school's starting, where the school leadership begins, or where the PTO ends. And I'll take it a step further, for this one, I actually don't have documents. Right now, I just came from the kindergarten graduation. I don't know if any of you knew, there was a kindergarten graduation tonight down at the Grange Hall. Beautiful event, it was a lot of fun, it was amazing, I mean, the students were phenomenal, it was, it was a great experience. We originally proposed to do it here at the school, it was gonna be a celebration. The kids were gonna make caps in class, it was gonna be on the playground where they got certificates, and had juice and cookies. We were told we had to go to the PTO, PTO shut it down without a vote, so the parents said, "Okay, we're just gonna do our own thing." The parents gave two-hundred-and-fifty guests down at the Grange tonight, I kid you not, it was awesome. You know who wasn't there? The kindergarten teachers. It was sad, many of the parents, many of the kids, said, "Where's my teacher?" Unfortunately, we didn't have an answer to give them, but I understand, it's downwind, it's downriver of this PTO effect, this PTO is starting to have an impact, a negative impact on school and on families. My last point, possible litigation. As I said, I am an attorney, I'm a government attorney, trust me, I'm not looking for work, I don't take private, private cases, that's what I'm, government attorney. But what I'm seeing in these emails is alarming to me. Here's a couple of emails, I have redacted names, there's no names, I'm not using them, but it's from the Stratford PTO email, and it says this, "This will happen on June seventeenth, which was after the PTO election." The lawyer that I reached out to just got back to me yesterday, they have referred me slash PTO to a couple of, couple other law firms that could better support the situation, so I'm reaching out to them this week. The next one, this was also on June seventeen. I did hear back from a couple of firms, and it'll be a couple of weeks before I can do consults, so please note, I'll update when I have information, but it looks like this isn't gonna be resolved over the summer. The bylaws say the new PTO officers are supposed to take place July first. This email doesn't make it seem like that's gonna happen. It's concerning. This is a distraction from the educational environment. The students, the teachers, the superintendent should not have to deal with this stuff. The PTO is a private organization, they can hold their meetings in a parking lot, at a coffee shop, at a public library. I am requesting this freeze for the students, for the staff, and for the health of the school environment. Now I want to make it clear, and I'll close with this, I fully support all of the teachers, the staff, all of you, I promise you, I support every one of you, and I support the PTO, and I'm hoping that this is all avoided, I'm hoping that this is wrong, and hopefully in a couple weeks, it'll turn over, parents will come in, it'll be evolved, the PTO will be a great healthy thing. Until then, I'm requesting a freeze, complete and total delineation, no PTO involvement, until somebody from the new PTO leadership can come in here, tell you that they're compliant, and that they're, they've got members, that they've got the bank account, that they're compliant with the national state laws, and then they're ready to reabsorb into the school environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a public comment?
Can I inform the board of something on this? Not a good response to him, but just to you all.
Sure, sure.
We already completely baptized, we've told them, we're out of this, until you figure this out, we don't, we're not participating in anything, we're not gonna get involved in anything, so, what he just requested is, from my perspective, it already happened. If something else has happened in the meantime, it's possible, because basically, they come as they please, yeah, but the school year's over, so, for the rest of the summer, I can't imagine anything anyway, but we also just, we've already made that clear, to affect both the people that are not leaving, and the people that have been elected, and we've said it to both parties, we're out until you solve this debate.
Accepting funds from the PTO would require a public hearing if that were to be proposed, right?
If it was more than five thousand dollars, if it's less than five thousand, but more than five hundred, I'm gonna put it this way, if they try to give us a dime, it will come to the board, I'm not gonna, I will not, as the superintendent said, anyway. Because, once again, I, I can't tell them what to do, their bylaws say they have to give any remaining funds to the school district. I, my advice to the board at that time, if that was to happen, would be to not take the funds, because I believe it could have litigation tied to it that I don't want to get involved with. So I don't know what they do in that case, if they can't give it to us, but I just feel like we need to stay out of this until it's resolved, and I've been clear with everybody that matters on my end, so.
I feel like anything moving forward, we would get our attorney.
Yeah, we would.
And that's, and that's exactly what...
Only if you were considering accepting.
Right, right.
Just, yeah. We have no obligation or responsibility or not, anything to the PTO.
Correct, their bylaws have no control over you whatsoever.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
Can I have a ten-second follow-up?
Sure.
Just wanna ask, what about the email address for the PTO? Just because the email address, I believe, isn't provided by the school, it appears to be...
Doesn't end with stratford.k12.nh.us?
It's stratfordpto@stratford.k12.nh.us.
Okay, then yes, I can discontinue that, I made this up of the board's wishes, that is a Stratford School District extension, why would they have had a Stratford School address?
Why did a lot of...
You know what, I would also ask you.
It was certainly just... Is the board in agreement? The, the PTO is a legally separate, a great legal entity from the school, and school and school board have literally nothing to do with it, other than accepting charitable...
One thing I completely agree that he said was, prior to all of this happening, it seems like there was a lot of blurred understandings, and I made it abundantly clear when they, I demanded the, the bylaws, they sent them to me, I reviewed the bylaws, and it was at that point that I started clarifying, we're not connected, I did not know their email address was our extension. So I would, I would personally recommend to the board, if you're in agreement with that, that we go ahead and terminate.
That must be, that's a newer email address, and it has that.
It's been there since I've been here, so.
So I, I think that, what I'm trying to say, I think that's about four years old.
One caveat to that, if there is some litigation, something, discontinue access to it, but we should hopefully maintain the records.
We, we don't, I mean, there's those natural protocols for trash, things of that nature, but the stuff that's in the inbox and whatever, so.
Okay, so I just want to make it clear that...
Thank you for bringing that up, I did not know.
When we do discontinue that...
Nothing's ever gone.
Double, double check, because it's not gone.
It's never gone. Thank you. All right. Okay, good, okay, thank you, thank you. Next, okay, superintendent's report.
There's gonna be thirty seconds.
Did you have the, um, did you have any questions about the manifest?
Um, there, there are, I haven't finished going through it, but there are several instances with...
You already said that.
There's, there's several instances with student names.
Oh, I did, okay.
From the transportation and stuff.
And that's, yeah. Did you hear that? There's several...
Sorry, no, I was joking, I was trying to type a text, and you already had heard and had already responded, that's the beauty of our videotaping our meetings.
Right, identifying information. Okay, so you hear that? Identifying information, student information, okay.
So...
Anything else about the manifest?
Not so far.
All right.
I'm just, I'm still with you.
All right, so now we're gonna look at the expense report.
Yeah, so I, this is about as hot, I know it feels chilly, but it is pretty hot off the presses, so, April, I think, completed the AP year around twelve-thirty, Greg cleaned up and had everything cleared up with the payroll by, it was yesterday afternoon, wasn't it? So once again, this is real, this is showing the most recent payroll, which is coming out this week, or has already come out this week, and it includes all the bills that April's been able to pay right up through today around twelve-thirty. So this is about as close to the end of the year as I've ever had one of these reports be, and if you look at the bottom line, we're just getting better and better. We're almost seven-hundred thousand dollars above that one.
And that, everything has been...
Encumbered as much as I can anticipate, still being needed, um, but yeah.
And that is also due to, what, did we have almost three-hundred thousand in unanticipated revenue?
Yeah, you see, now, once again, the revenue for the month of June has not been processed, because it's not all complete with the bank, but as of May thirty-first, our revenue was up three-hundred, oh no, sorry, that's a covered, uh... Hold on, sorry, I'm so sorry, I had that earlier in. Yeah, our revenue were over by three-hundred-seventy-one thousand, seven-hundred-sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents.
Okay. Where is the breakdown where that revenue came from getting just through the...
So unfortunately, that, I missed it, I showed up there, I don't know why, it's a tracking thing, what you can see is, this breakdown is adding up all those over-unders right here. So I can see like preschool tuition, page, uh, no, first, it's, page, it's... Right there, so, okay, yours, yours carries over into a spot that mine does.
Okay.
So there's preschool, transfer, bank interest, so on and so forth, and you can see how much we're over or under.
Okay, but where, this doesn't equal, but that doesn't equal three-hundred-seventy-one thousand dollars, where's the unanticipated?
Yeah, sixty-two thousand over here. Sixty-two thousand over.
Okay.
So that's under, that's over, 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 over.
Okay, the page, okay.
Going, over, 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 so, everything's over with the exception of preschool tuition, but once again, it might be fine now, I just haven't done the June.
Okay, as far as the three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, I'm seeing sixty-two thousand dollars, you're saying?
Yeah.
Below three thousand, then another twelve, a nine, almost ten, right. And we have the next page, ten, fifty-five, thirty-seven. Okay, so thirty-seven is the big one, what is that, where's that thirty-seven from?
And then don't forget over here, and there's one on the previous page.
Okay.
You've got the extra fifty there, and you've got the extra forty-two there.
Okay, we're, we have miscellaneous, thirty-seven thousand, state aid...
Special aid, it's probably the junk of it.
Okay. And where's the forty-two?
It's on the previous.
Okay, and where is the forty-two, is that from...
It's E-rate refund.
Okay.
And the next one down was reimbursements from grants.
Okay, so the E-rate refund, I see, is that only the ten dollars?
No, 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 those are separate, this is a separate box, it's gray, that's the reason why, I put it off to the side, because we don't want to touch that.
Okay, so the E-rate, where's the forty-two?
All these items line up with these items. This is off to the side, this is off to the side. We got them all together, it comes to three-hundred-seventy-one thousand, seven-hundred-sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents.
The reimbursement of fifty thousand dollars...
It's various grants, I just chunked it together.
Okay, so that's where I'm trying to decide, figure out where that came from, the fifty thousand dollars.
It's various grants.
It's grants, okay. All right. Good. Anybody else have questions?
So right now, without the June revenue included, we're at six-hundred-ninety-two thousand, seven-hundred-forty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents, that is encumbering a bunch of money for four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more in pay and benefits, because we have the final pay of the year for all employees that are still working, coming up in early July, that finishes off this year, and then we have three more pay cycles after that for the twenty-six year-round teachers, so we have to keep them in mind as well. So I've put it aside, four-hundred-and-fifty, it's hard to calculate, I don't have it broken down that way in our system, so basically, I can look at all teachers, I can look at all parents, but I can't do is look at just those teachers with that certain amount, there's no way for me to separate them out. So we're guestimating based on last year's number, which was about eighty-two thousand dollars, so I'm saying, I think there'll be about a hundred thousand, because there we got pay raises and things like that, so I brought it up to about a hundred thousand dollars for pay areas, for those three pay areas, plus the next payroll that has more than just teachers in it, I gave it a hundred-and-fifty thousand, which should more than cover, how much the next one is for?
Okay.
So we have one for a hundred-and-fifty, and we have three of them for a hundred, that's worth of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and it covered money for pay and benefits as soon as we looked at the, and then of course, like I said, we still don't have all the June revenues, which means that that revenue line's gonna be even higher, so, I've got over encumbered at this point for what's left, if you look at all the lines, you go down the chart, I encumbered in key places, I think I've over encumbered, so I honestly think that our total is actually over seven-hundred thousand, but...
Okay, can I, when we look at the budget summary, this is on page twelve, the consolidated funds minus salary and benefits, okay, so that's all funds, and then the next one is just the salary and benefits.
Correct, yeah, they're together, it's for the thirteen million.
Okay, so, the negative three-oh-eight, was that the overage on the special F?
Yeah, that would be, that would be part of it, yes, yeah. There's other overages, we have other overages, we have facilities overages, so that's, that's part of the overages, yes. Remember, a lot of special F's and salary and benefits as well, so we got overages on those types of items as well.
Because we didn't fill positions.
That's where some of the savings is coming from.
That's what I mean, right.
There's other places where we spend more than...
Okay. Does anybody else have questions? No, good?
I had one additional one on the manifest.
Okay.
I found an invoice in here for Amazon that I don't think is captured on the, on the manifest at the very end.
It was in a separate bundle.
Oh, it was in a separate bundle?
Well, that's why I didn't know it needed, doesn't need to be on that page.
I'm not...
It's on the cover sheet under ACH, because I...
We, we're gonna start paying Amazon through ACHs, so if you see on the...
I see ACH.
Okay. Abel, can you walk over and, I'll help him understand, just so we get it clear.
Okay, so while, while we're doing... Okay, so while, while we're doing that, do you have the presentation to presentation tables? Nope, okay.
Okay, we have people that aren't coming back.
So we're just left to complete the facility use forms, so we can just have to place the facility use forms.
Facility use forms.
There are a lot of them, are they mainly from the rec?
Three from the rec, two from the library. The rec is basketball clinic in September, the goalkeeper clinic in July, the soccer practicing games in August, October. The Hill library is parking for two different events, one on June 28th and one on August 8th. And Hill did provide their liability insurance, the other did not, but that's because we have like 50 copies of it all there.
So is Sadie, is she doing this, is this part of her, um, is this part of the community service doors, I guess it's going to be toward her, she's not seen it, right? Must be community service, but. The goalkeeping clinic. Okay. Do you want to make a motion to accept the facility use requests? You can chunk them, or you can do everything.
Did you, did you give dates and everything, I'm sorry, I was.
No, they're all.
So I gave the months that they were.
All right, I'll, um, I'm just gonna move that we accept these as presented on, on our forms.
Okay, do you have a second?
I have a second.
All right, discussion, so just for the record, we have one for the youth basketball clinic, that's by Stratford rec. Then we have the youth soccer, goalkeeping clinic, also by Stratford rec. Then another youth soccer, just a regular soccer program, Stratford rec. Then we have the Hill library for parking for an event they're holding. And another event they're holding, park, additional parking. Okay, any other discussion? Nope, okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess, yep, Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes?
All right, the Stratford Playground Project Committee is looking to donate $2,283.50 to the school district towards the future replacement of the large playground structures. The school board has previously had administration set up a student activities playground account for this purpose, oh, sorry about the spelling there, this is the first donation for this purpose. And then you can see the letter from the committee within the packet if you'd like to do so. I do strongly recommend that we accept this, because this is exactly what we've been trying to get to happen, and I think they're starting to finally gain some momentum.
Good, okay, would someone like to make a motion to accept the donations from the playground committee for the purpose of rebuilding our playground?
Yep, I, um, and will we accept the donation of $2,283.50 from the playground committee? To be deposited into the fund for replacing our playground.
Okay, do you have a second, or a second, okay, discussion?
Thank them for, I'd like to thank them for all they're doing for our district.
I, I, just because we're talking about the playground, I know that someone who had an injury this, um, last month, I think it was, because the chain guard on one of the swings was not there, and the finger got caught in the chain. You know how you usually have a plastic sleeve or a rubber sleeve over the chain? Apparently, I was told, um, apparent that there was no sleeve on this, on the chain, and the child's finger got caught.
So it's not something that we got on our inspection report, so I'm not aware of chain guards, it might be something that some places do, but it didn't fall under the inspection report, now we can add them if you'd like me to. But once again, it wasn't something that Primex, when they came out to their playground inspection, said that has to be addressed. They did ask us to replace two of the chains themselves, because the chains have become quite corroded.
Well, this person broke his finger.
No, I, I'm not.
Here, and I just thought that, I know my own personal, we have a little, what he said, that we have the, the chain guards, just like in the bottom part where the kids put their hands. I don't know if they wanted to do that in between, just because somebody broke a finger.
Hey, I'd be fine with that, would we, would we want to make a motion for that? You mean, we have to?
I don't think we have to make a motion.
I don't think you have to make a motion, I'm just, so add plastic coating to chains.
Okay, so.
Do some research on that, we'll get it done as soon as we can.
Okay, so we have a motion about accepting the funds, any other question? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess, yep, Katrina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes?
Next is that from the same group, they're looking to have a give butter account established for people to electronically donate money directly to the student activities account for this purpose. The system is widely seen as secure and is used by many organizations for purposes of this nature, once again, you can see their letter. I did do some research on this, I did speak to other people I'm in, to know with, and they said the gift butter is, is very much used for this kind of a purpose. I'd never heard of it before, so, um, but it sounds like this is a very common use for this type of, of this, this type of account. The biggest question is that they want that donation to go directly into the student activity account. Um, and I don't know if the board is okay with that or not, so that's why I said I'd bring it to you folks, board, consideration. The other option would be to not allow it, and they would have to continue to donate the money the way they are. If it does go directly, and I would still have to come to the board and say, you know, if it's increments greater than $500, I'd have to come to the board and say, hey, we've had another donation. And you'd have to accept it, so we could do like a monthly financial report of that, if that would help the board, but once again, it's, it's really your decision about what you want to do here.
I have some questions, I don't know if we should make a motion and then have a discussion first?
Well, I, I'll just say that I believe last year we adopted a policy about digital fundraising. Oh, okay, and as long as it matches, as long as we call it a policy, or if it needs to be corrected.
It has to be pre-approved by the board, so.
I was just confused as far as, um, which, it says the give butter account will be linked to the district's official bank account.
For student activities, we have two accounts, one's for student activities.
Okay, so it would be the student activity account?
Correct, and then within the student activity account, so all of our money is pooled in two different bank accounts. And what we do is, is when we get money into those accounts, we then divert it to the line that it belongs to. So when money is donated in there, all the give butter donations would be directed to what we call the, uh, student activities playground account.
So, okay, this is where I'm going with that, I, I thought we only had one account.
We have two.
We have two, okay, so the, the one account that this would go into, what money is in that account right now?
Student activities, so.
Just student activities, okay. My concern was, we have another account with a lot of money in it, right, that's like how we pay our bills.
And they're not linked at all.
So I was a little bit concerned about a digital access to that big account, if there could be any hacking, you know, if you do things online and your account's connected to it, there's always that concern. So knowing that it's just a student activity account and not our big account that we keep all of our revenue in, I feel better about it, that was my question. And also, are there fees attached to this, like, no, okay. Anybody want to make a motion, have other questions? Do we, do we make a motion yet? No, we didn't make a motion.
No, so I move, we authorize the approval of the playground fundraising committee to use a give butter account for the purpose of raising funds for our playground to be linked to our student activity fund account, playground line.
Can you make a contingent upon me checking with legal? Just, just you raising that question made me think I would probably have to give an opinion.
This motion is contingent upon, um, the recommendation of our attorney.
Okay, we have a second, I will cut in, okay, discussion?
Um, so yes, we also have a policy TFGA, um, which like lays out the process for this. One of them, just, just so we know our policies, um, the requests that should be in writing includes basically the employee that is responsible for it. So we, I think we need to figure out who the employee associated with it will be. The website, which we know the nature and quantity or amount of donations being requested, which I think is kind of an open-ended one. The classroom program or activity benefit, we know that this part, the exact language that'll be, that will be used in the crowdfunding campaign, as well as any graphics that'll be included. Um, it talks about the start and end dates, again, that's kind of open-ended. And then it also needs to, a statement of recognition by the requester that any proceeds of the campaign are school property. So just, I guess the only thing that's missing is like we, whatever, if it's gonna be considered a school crowdfunding, our policy says that, you know, we, we obviously want to know what's being put out there in writing.
Right.
As far as requesting, so it's, they just have to make sure that they are stating that any funds collected are school property.
So I don't think it can be school crowdfunding in this particular case, we're not a charitable organization.
Okay.
And I don't want to get into that business, what I'm saying, this is their, this is this outside organization.
So it doesn't fall under our.
That's saying, we want to donate, but we want to do it through this give butter, and we want to attach it to your account. It does raise the question of, does that cross the line, so that's why.
Yeah, great question.
That's why I want to definitely talk to the team, so if you made a contingent upon that, if he says it's okay, are you okay with it?
Are we able to make up another small account, just for that?
I don't think I want to, I don't think I want this draft, if, if he says no to this, then I'm pretty sure we shouldn't have it linked to Stratford accounts at all. The, the real problem that I worry about is when do you cross the line into becoming a charitable organization, and I don't want to become one, so.
Anybody else? Okay, all right. Katrina, yep, Eric?
Yes.
Jess, yep, Kyle, and Debbie, yes. All right, next. Needed items.
Needed items, so on that page, so round one, you approved the list, which was great, you asked me a couple of clarifying questions, so I'll explain those first, and then I'll talk about each of them. So the microphones, what we found out by calling the microphone guy, the guy that does this work for us, is that what he was providing was strictly for drama. It wasn't going to address the general all-purpose microphones that we had, and as you even heard in graduation the other night, there's some problems there. He said the biggest problem for him is that the equipment that we need to use with those microphones is different than the equipment that we need to use for the stuff for drama. And he says that requires changing out of stuff within the box, so you need to have double sets of equipment, and those equipment pieces need to be swapped out, creates time, energy, concerns. His suggestion, if we're willing to go this route, is that he reimburses us with the four mics that he had bought them earlier this year, and he, in his quote, uh, I didn't quote it here, it doesn't matter, it's on here, uh, in the quote that he put down, he said, he gave us the reimbursement amount, which was how much we purchased them for. And then he gave us a bill for the cost of purchasing all eight of the drama mics, the six handheld mics and everything, all on the same system. So once that whole thing is set up, there's no more pulling equipment out, putting equipment in, there's no needing to store it in a separate location. Everything would be brand new, we'd be in a great place moving forward, and the total cost of that came to $3,445.52, that included the reduction because of the reimbursement. So that is the bottom line, I definitely recommend that, that's small money for us to not have microphone issues anymore, and for the drama program to finally have what they need. Picnic tables, um, we have been trying to have our students go outside for lunches on the nice days, um, the problem is we only have those four tables over there. They're also in double duty, they like to use them as a classroom over there, so we keep hauling them back and forth. You've seen them, they're kind of bulky, they're heavy, so it takes a lot of energy to move them back and forth. Uh, if, if you're interested, we're, we're thinking eight picnic tables, um, would give us this capacity to be able to move an entire lunch outside, so the kids would buy their food, and they could go outside, they could sit at the picnic tables on the nicer days, we do put them in the shades of the trees and the building, um, when we're out there, and so therefore, they're not in the direct sun. They also have umbrella holes, so if we found that we still needed a little more protection, we could always down the road pick up some umbrellas as well. Teacher desks, uh, last time you approved some teacher desks, we actually saved quite a bit of money on the water bubbler systems. And so, once again, I told you, we have a lot of bad teacher desks, in fact, three out of the four that we're buying are not replacing bad teacher desks, they're replacing no teacher desks. So we're actually in a situation where we would love to be able to add a couple more, just once again, to put a dent in that, any of these lines you're taking with that. Headphones, they're just aging, we have a lot that have stopped working, some that have disappeared, some that have had to be thrown away. For $400, we'd be able to restock the headphone supplies, so that every kid that needs to get on their device and not disrupt their people around them would be able to do so. This is more at the elementary level than the middle high. Paper water, remember I said last time, we'd like to restock that, so that'd be about $2,100 to get us the water, the copy paper, and to restock the supply closet, just getting us in a good place for next year. The dean's office would like two waffle chairs, they find that when the kids come down to, you know, address certain concerns, they get very antsy, and there's a thought that the waffle chairs would give them a place to kind of be able to address that. Smart boards, um, the cost of smart boards has continued to rise since our budget was put in place, so we're not gonna be able to buy what we had said we were gonna buy, we're probably down to about three now as opposed to five. And we're looking to add two more, so we can get back to the five that we were hoping to get this year. Uh, IT software, which includes Claude AI, which is a more advanced AI software product than the free version, it'd give us unlimited access, right now we're limited, if you ask too many questions, this is what you're gonna offer today. Things like that, and we're using it more and more to support various things that we're doing. And that would be for five people, the remote support software and PTP, and you can see the descriptions there, what they are in the why important line. A rolling cart for literature, math, materials, and you can actually see that some of these were specific requests, so this is a kindergarten teacher that's saying, I'd really like to be able to organize this stuff better. Uh, and, and all of these had to go through Natalie and/or Jeff for review, or Jay, depending upon what it was. So all of these have been reviewed for importance, that there's a feel that there's a need, you do notice over on the right, we do put whether it's low, medium, or high. Chromebook cart for grade three teachers, their Chromebook cart is bulky and it's a bit broken up, uh, so the idea would be to replace the, um, the middle school clocks. So we can ring bells at certain times of the day, so the teachers get out of sync with each other every now and then, the middle school clocks would allow them to have everything aligned. A sensory table for kindergarten, there's currently a sensory table, um, but it is bad, I mean, it's just getting worse and worse, so once again, trying to add that. A commercial clothes washing machine, so you may have seen me multiple times this year talking about our washer, uh, begging the community for a new dryer, which we did get, we did not get a new washer, and as a result, our washing machine has now been repaired three times. Collectively, it's worth quite a bit more than the value of the machine was initially, um, and it's going to continue to break. When he came out last time, he said this machine cannot handle the mops that you're trying to wash, and that they get very heavy when they get wet. He says you really do need to upgrade, so one of the things we're throwing out there is the possibility of upgrading to a commercial washing machine. This is kind of like the ones you see in the laundromat, you put coins in, we would put coins in. A carpet extractor, you don't have to do this now if you don't want to, but we're gonna do it as soon as July 1 comes, if that's the alternative, our current carpet extractor has died. Last year, our previous facilities manager contracted out carpet cleaning for one session, and it was about $4,000. You can see the cost of the carpet machine is a lot less than that, and our own people would be doing it, we do it about four times a year if we have an operating machine. Once again, it broke back in like February, March, we tried to repair it, we were unsuccessful, it really is old, it's done its duty. And we'd like to get a new one, and this is an exact machine, a lot of these are hyperlinks, if you ever want to. A step for kindergarten, uh, they, one of the kindergarten teachers is really having trouble with her kids being able to reach the new digital interactive display that we got for her, uh, the kids can't reach except for the bottom little portion of the screen. This step would give the child much more access to the screen, it's very wide, so you could actually have a couple of students get up there and work together. Once again, it was deemed to be worthy. Portable easel, the easel in question is basically falling apart, and so looking to replace that. Flexible seating, um, beanbag seating and bulletin boards, you can see they're all coming from the fourth grade team, uh, so just really replacing some things that are in need. The laminator is, it's, it's dying, it's, it's near its end of life, and so once again, the request is, can we get a new laminator? If we buy the one that they found, which includes a, a contract for repair, that cost is higher. I did find the exact same machine on Amazon with no guarantee, you know, like no support, for a lot less, um, we can go either way with that. And then large industrial fans, as anybody knows that was in graduation last Friday, or Monday, it gets a little warm in here, and all we have is these little tiny classroom fans, which are useless for moving air. We'd like to pick up at least three, I think is what we have here, two, oh, oh, okay, the other day we updated to three, but you can stick with two if you want. The other day, we were looking at that, and we were saying, if we could have them blowing in from the hallways and have another one pushing air outside, we'd get probably a nice cross flow of air in that gymnasium. So that was one of the things we're thinking, we also could use them in the calf, because the calf has no air as well, it's quite stuffy in there. These industrial fans I've used in previous districts, they got wheels on them, so you tip them back, and you can wheel them where you need to go, re-stand them up. Yeah, so, and that's the. Yeah, so, and that's the list. Any questions on any of the items? I can go into as much detail as I feel comfortable, or I'll tell you I don't know if I don't.
I'm sorry.
The tools are the very bottom.
That carpet extractor?
Yep.
That was not planning on being replaced on July first, or was it? Were you planning on buying a new one next year?
No, it wasn't part of the budget process. It's just gonna be one of the lines that we have. We have those big lines that we do, but we have to replace it. So this is a way to avoid having that large of an item hit the budget right out of the gate.
And how much did we approve last time?
Thirty, thirty, wasn't it? Yeah, I think it was, oh no, one, the one item was thirty, so it had to be more than that, I think it was fifty.
Fifty-three?
Thank you.
That was the last.
The, the last one was fifty-three, there we go. The thirty, what I was thinking of was the, uh, the telephone network, that was thirty on the nose, but.
So I, I have a couple of questions going. Now, this isn't on here, but we know that we have a freezer, a giant walk-in freezer.
Broke today.
That broke today.
Yeah.
So do we have money? I have no idea if that would have to be replaced or whatever.
We don't know what's wrong and they can't get here until Friday.
Right, okay. How much money do we have in our food service leftover? Because we could take money out of food service to pay for repairs or whatever for the freezer. I just wanna make sure we know.
That's not in that package, that's a separate thing.
I thought, I thought some stuff was supposed to be here.
You can see how much we overbudgeted for food service, but that's not that line that you're talking about.
Okay.
You're talking about that food service account line that you spent for the dishwasher.
Right.
How much was left in that separate?
I, I thought we spent most of it, but I don't, we.
At one point, we had thirty-five, then we brought the dishwasher, okay. So I'm just, you know, I just wanna think about the, if, I hope we don't have to replace the freezer. That would be.
The freezer itself looks like it's fine. What we're talking about is potentially a compressor, potentially a blower inside. It could be as simple as a little fuse or something. It just, we did everything we knew how to do today, and we just couldn't figure it out, and nobody can get out there, and unfortunately, there was no way to keep the food frozen. It had been broken since sometime during the night, the food was already, the freezer was already at the thirty-five degrees, and all the experts said you can't go back to frozen at that point. It's basically look at it like refrigerated food at that point. The other thing that's broken is we're still waiting on a quote for it, it's the gymnasium, the heat in there doesn't work at all, those two big things up in the roof don't work. So we're waiting on quotes from that, looking at whether it's a simple repair or whether it's a more costly replacement, we don't know yet. So there's definitely big-ticket items, but that's not usually what you guys would wanna use fund balance. I mean, I, you can if you want, obviously, I don't control that, but that's not typically what we're using, this sort of end-of-the-year thing. That would more likely be either the emergency fund or Warren article, I would think, if they're big tickets. I just don't know if they are, they might not be that bad.
Okay. So I guess I have a couple of questions. One, this software.
Yes.
IT software.
Yep.
How, you have that as a medium.
Yep.
Concern. I mean, how is this benefiting the students?
This is more, I think, in particular, supporting the staff that are supporting the students. So the AI, it, like I said, we have a free version of it right now. It's limited, so if you try and use it too far, it's cut you off, it doesn't, actually it's not as robust, it doesn't give you as detailed of support as other paid-for products will do. Jay's been using his own version of it, it's, it's much more robust than what we have for free. Once again, it would be nice to not have my IT director using his own money to buy a product.
So give me an example of how this would help the staff?
Well, it would help five people, right?
Five people.
It's a five, so we're really looking at the leadership team having more access to it. So what does it do? Well, in Jay's case, he's creating right now an entire software program for us that will manage all true, all absence recording. So people will go, be able to go in next year to a product that looks very much like a very expensive ASAP product, and be able to go in and actually utilize that and track it limited, so it's here actually out, it won't let you use more, and to cross-reference that to time sheets, so that the time sheets are filled in and people don't have to go do a separate software. Right now, if you're a parent, for example, you have a time sheet that tells you your absences and stuff, you've got another absence log that you have to maintain, you've gotta call the office and let them, like, there's all these different components, and what this will do is it automatically will email your supervisor if you're requesting time off. It will automatically let that supervisor go in and approve or deny it. If they deny it, they can give reasons, it's a, it's a great, it's, like I said, it's very similar to other apps and software that's out there.
Sort of like Frontline? Frontline was something we used.
Trying, I'm trying not to say too many products, but yes, a lot like that.
Cause Frontline was very expensive.
But Jay's creating this for free for us, and he's using AI for the more complex codes that we need, so that's an example. I'm helping my administrative team realize that running stuff through AI when you're maybe dealing with a sensitive matter, letting AI give you suggestions has been very powerful for us. I think that, you know, there's just so many different ways. I created an evaluation tool using AI software. I created actually part of the spreadsheet that we track some of the finances with using the AI to support some of the formulas. Excel and Google Sheets, you, as you know, uses some complex ones. I did try to use it the other day to get you the charts that you wanted, the solutions that were coming out of it were very time-consuming, and I did not have time for that. The user solution was just to run separate surveys in the future. So it's a very powerful tool. I know that we are infants in its use, Jay is a toddler, and it, well, he's probably mad at me for saying that, but he's, he's much more advanced than we are, is what I'm trying to say, and it's probably still barely scratching the surface of what he can do with AI. It's very, very powerful. We're not using it to replace our work, we're using it to supplement the work that we're doing. Things that we used to maybe have to call for an expert or farm out to somebody to do, we were not gonna have to. And like I said, we, we just, his creation of that product just saved the district probably ten, eleven thousand dollars a year, a year by the way. And he's also gonna be working with us to create a professional development tool that would help us not only track all of our staff's professional development, but at the end of the three-year cycle, put together the report that we would then use to submit for renewable people certifications with the state, and we're working on that right now. There was one more thing I told him I wanted to work on, but I can't think what it is off the top of my head right now.
So is this one time purchase? We don't have to pay fees every year or anything for this?
That I can't tell you. There, there's quite possible that it's an annual thing, and if it was, it would be added to the budget in the future moving forward. Like I said, we've taken the free product about as far as it could go. I get timed out all the time on it, saying, you overused me today, wait till tomorrow.
I also have one more question about the laminator.
Yes.
I mean, that seems like a lot of money to pay for the annual maintenance. Would, would just buying the laminator from Amazon?
Yep, you can see the savings.
That's, that's like a thousand dollar difference.
Yep. Yep, perfectly fine, and that would lower your bottom line by the difference of those two numbers. So that thirty-one, one eighty-nine ninety is adding up that column that's above it. So if we do that, we just have to swap that out for a slightly lower number.
Anybody else have questions?
So, um, the laminator is, the one from, there's an annual equipment maintenance agreement for it, but do you get skirt around that when you get the one from Amazon, or how does that?
Yep, so that you get the Amazon, you get the product, and that's it. At that point, if you need maintenance, you'd have to call somebody to come in and do maintenance. And once again, for at least a few years, you gotta assume it's probably gonna operate fine, but at some point, it'll start to have issues like the current one does. We would just have to have somebody that can be able to come and repair. We don't have a maintenance agreement on our current one, like it's very old.
Right, yeah. So I guess my only question is, is it says that the other one come with delivery, installation, and training, so I just would be, or do they know how to op, operate it? Is it like similar?
I think we could figure it out between YouTube videos and other things, I'm sure we can find all the training we need. It just, once again, when you have somebody come in, right, they know what they're doing, they set it up, they say, this is the do's and the don'ts, that can be very beneficial. There's real advantages to having somebody in the know show up and provide, Jess, April, and probably some other office staff, that training and expertise, if you will. If you don't have it, I'm sure we can figure it out.
So the laminator?
Yeah. Uh, just like with everything, right, there's bells and whistles up short of this and all the rest of it, but yes, I assume we can handle that on our own. That's why I put the alternate price in there. I got the, this was what was entered, was the twenty-seven seventy-four with all that description. I then said, you know what, I'm gonna look at what it would cost just for the device and all the extra bells and whistles, so.
And so did you price shop everything on here?
Yeah, I went through each of the items, actually, other people did it for me in a lot of cases, but the commercial washing machine, they range, I mean, there's three, four thousand dollar machines out there, I don't, I don't think that's the route we're going. We, we aren't doing a ton of laundry, what we're doing largely is like wet mop and dry mop heads. Every day at lunch, we do a load of rags, so that people wipe all the tables down, and when they're done, they throw them into this other bucket. We, at the end of the day, we wash and dry all those. Sometimes we'll get some stuff, they get like the custodians when they're doing various cleaning activities, might come up with some products that need to be washed and dried. And every now and then, we have problems with things that happen in the school, you know, some, we had a flood one day, and it got some stuff wet, we were able to throw it in the dryer. So we do use it every day. When we, when these were down, they weren't working at multiple times this year. We pay people overtime to take them home, use their own machines, which made me nervous, I didn't like that, but we had no other choice, it was like, these things have to get cleaned. So we really are in a position where probably getting a better washer would be beneficial, but one we have is working again, we had it repaired. I would say we don't get rid of it, we put it out in the annex, and if this, if the commercial washer went down, we'd be able to swap it out while we waited for it to get repaired. They're not same-day repairs, right? I mean, the last time was like, I think, three days, we had a wish to repair first and then we'll be out of here.
Anybody else have questions?
Rob and I don't think that we need it, I was just surprised to see the cost for the step for kindergarten.
I know, I saw it too. It's like five hundred dollars.
But it's probably like something more elaborate.
It's a step, and it's got these things on the side, so as you're stepping, going up or stepping down, you can put it onto things. It's wide, so it's very durable. Yes, it is.
Anything like labeled probably for a school environment.
Correct. You know, Kyle and his woodshop, crank out one just as pretty probably, but you know, not sure he wants to.
No, I agree, it's just sometimes that's the cost of things.
Yeah, yeah. I looked at other stepstools, what I found for other stepstools, cause I was looking, I, the first thing I said was, wow, that's a lot of a stepstool. I went on and was looking for them, they're all like just single-person stepstools, they're not very like plastics and things like that. This one, as I said, it's wide, it's almost as wide as the entire screen, it looks like maybe four kids could probably stand up there at the same time. Where they're in kindergarten, maybe it's more like five or six, they are little tiny things. And like I said, it's got the hand.
Yeah. I don't understand. I, I'm, I just am so having a hard time with the five, almost five hundred dollars annual fee for maintenance for a laminator. It's like, for three years, you could buy another laminator.
Yep, so switch over to the other.
I mean, that's just my personal feeling, I just think that's a lot of money.
Right, I know, I think that's why we're, we're just gonna go with the one off Amazon, which doesn't have a annual cost.
Seriously, that's why I looked up the other, it sounds like I anticipated your concern.
All right, so for review, if we go to the, that one, that brings the total down to thirty thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Twenty-eight?
Thirty, what was it?
Thirty one thirty-one. Wait, too many.
Everybody good with everything else? Any other questions? Should I do that one?
Just for the, the stepstool, had, could, has the idea of lowering the board been considered, or does that make it less accessible for the teacher? Are we talking about low access to one of those smart boards?
It'd be like that, and it's a step that allows the kid to gain more access of the entire board. So once again, lowering it means that you're not gonna be able to see over all the tables and heads and everything else.
Yep.
So I think you wanna keep it up a little bit.
Got you.
You want the kids to be able to step up to that height and write on it. I've seen them in other rooms, not this, this one, I've seen like the single-step stools, where it's like a single person, like they drink it over, like you might see at a pet store, to look up in the cage. I've seen those a lot. What I liked about this one, and I could see why she chose it, was because it really does allow communal activity up at the board. Where the other, you'd have to have four or five stepstools to achieve the same thing.
Okay, would, somebody wanna make a motion to accept this, or is there still more questions?
I have no more questions. Katrina, do you, would you like to make it?
Yeah, I can make it.
Cause you did the math.
Yep. All right, so I make a motion to approve the expenditure of approximately, do we do the exact amount or just round up a little?
Just do the, just do the exact.
Okay. Um, estimated thirty thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents as presented to us on the need of, needed items list from the unreserved fund balance.
Okay, you have a second?
I have a second.
And discussion?
Um, so I would like to just note that we, we frozen the budget, and the budget's still frozen, and at the last meeting, we had, instead of unfreezing the budget, we asked Rob to just bring this additional list to us. So we could have alternatively, I know some people have different thoughts and feelings about spending money on a fund balance, but had we unfreezed the budget, a lot of these items would have been purchased out of the lines that are already in the budget for things like furniture and materials and stuff like that. So these are in addition to our budget.
Really our fund balance, these are things that would have been bought if we hadn't frozen them.
Correct. Promotion.
And the same thing with the last one, except for the phone system. That was the one exception, but we found out it's essential, so.
I don't think, yes, yes, okay. And just to know also that we chose the laminator from Amazon rather than that other one that saves us a thousand dollars. Okay? Eric?
Yes.
Jess, and Katrina, and Kyle, and Debbie.
Yes. Ongoing and completed board meeting, past list, you can see a lot of stuff got checked off from the last one. We are finally, I'm so excited about this, we have finally made contact with our National Guard. The phone number that many people have been calling throughout the year was a person that had left about a year ago. There was no indication on the voicemail that they had left, so we thought we were leaving something and just not getting responded to. One of the things that voicemail said, if you need an immediate, you can call this chief warrant officer, and we were like, oh, well, you know, I said, let's give that a try. I left the voicemail, got nothing back, and then it was a couple weeks went by, and I said, well, let me try again, so I tried again, and he got back to us. And he said he didn't get the first voicemail, so, you know, that happens. So anyway, we now have a contact up there, Jeff, Natalie, and I are going up in July, I can't remember the exact date off the top of my head. We're gonna tour the facility, we're going to talk about, we have an agenda worth of things, including our emergency offsite location, and what that looks like and how that works. Looking at use of facilities, they have a gymnasium out there, they have extensive fields up there, and what that would look like. A third grade field trip, used to go up there all the time, I guess a Blackhawk used to come in, and kids were able to do things that didn't happen this year because the guy that did it had left and nobody knew. So we're gonna get that all set up, and you know, just other items that might come up through the conversation, so we hope to get that relationship going. He seems incredibly nice, and I wish I'd written his name down, but I didn't, so I'm just gonna keep calling him chief warrant officer. But he seemed incredibly nice, incredibly supportive, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that meeting. And, uh, they'll come back to you guys in the fall and say, hey, we've got all these other great things lined up with the guard, so. Any other questions on the items list? Student loan report is self-explanatory, we're down to another two students overall, and that will be the last one, which is the chair. And emergency day updates.
Do you want to first explain why we had the emergency day?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, absolutely, so. The water stopped working, yeah, yeah. Like, we had so many this year, which one was this one? Okay, yeah, just today I was dealing with the freezer, it's broken, so, yes, water update. So we have a water filtration system, and we have a well, and we have these two very large tanks. And basically what happens is throughout the night, the well fills the tanks. Because it can't keep up with our daily consumption during high usage, like the well itself just can't pump that much water out for a minute to keep up with our normal consumption, so we have these big tanks. And it fills them, and then throughout the day, it usually keeps it, I've never seen it go below half full before, unless we were draining down a purpose. So it's really good at maintaining, but this particular day, it was field day, and so we blamed it on field day, we thought, oh, we drained it, like we had too many water activities going on. Well, it turns out, what we didn't know is the water coming in had slowed quite a bit, we didn't know, because none of us had ever looked at the flow of water before. And we just thought, well, it's still coming in, so it must be working, but it turns out that it was slowing down, and that afternoon, we had just made it, the last minute of that day is when the water stopped flowing in our buildings, we're like, perfect. It's got all night to fill up, it'll be great in the morning, water's still flowing, well, got a call about eleven, eleven-thirty that night, saying the water had almost come to a stop. And it was not flowing well, so I got up very early, came into work, looked at it myself, realized something's really wrong here. We could not figure out what it was. Looked at everything I knew to look at, obviously the companies were all closed at four o'clock in the morning, so I couldn't call anybody. But, um, you know, just kinda looked through everything, and we couldn't figure it out, so I had to cancel school for the day. We can't operate, we had that much water in the bottom of the tanks, which the day before, we had had about that much when we went into water consummation mode at the half day. So we couldn't even get a half day, we only had about that much water in there, so. I ended up having to cancel the day, I just couldn't take that chance of running out of water and needing to send kids home at ten o'clock in the morning. We were able to get hold of the pump guy after he opened up in the morning, and he said, hey, go into this other room, look at these tanks, look at this gauge. We did, he goes, it's not your well. He said, there's something between those tanks, the, the, the two smaller tanks that we put pressure on the system, and those water storage tanks, something is broken in between there. And so he said, who do you, who does your water filtration? We said who it was, he said, give them a call. We gave a call, we left the voicemail because they were not quite open yet, or not the person we needed to speak to wasn't there yet. But in the interim, we decided to go through every filter, and that was the pump guy had said, he said, go through every filter, look at everything. Some of you can forcibly regenerate, so they can pay back flush and all that kind of stuff. We did everything, we could think, we went down the line, each filter, each filter, and then we looked up, and this is little blue filter about this big. I'm like, what's that? And then we remembered, oh, that's the thing that takes the marble chips, you remember the old injection system? It takes the marble chips, so if they get too small, they would get sucked up, and they didn't want that in the water, so this thing was to filter those out. Well, we took that cover off, and it was, I don't know how to describe it, black mud. It was actually gooey or more like a kid's slime, is what it felt like, but it was just pure black, we had no idea what it was, we had a different filter. We were able to swap the filters out, put it back together, and the water started flowing again. So it turns out that's what it was, we've now learned that lesson, it won't happen again in the future, we'll now know that can be a problem. It had just been replaced a month before, and they're good for three times a year, which you're supposed to replace them. So we didn't even contemplate that as being an issue, because it had just been replaced when they put the new soda ash system in. They swapped it out at that time. We don't know what it is, all the pump guy could think of was something had disturbed enough gunk in the ground. He doesn't know why, he said, be aware, he said, you regenerated those other things before you got to that. He said, so those systems were probably all garbaged up as well, but by regenerating them, we cleaned them, flushed them out. So he said, if that might not have been, they'll think, like, if we had done that one first, he said, the water still might not have flown. So he thinks it might have been us working on all of those in the system, that's the very last one. He said, all of those probably added to the low, low water. So that was the emergency that we had, we've learned a lot of lessons about that, and will be obviously better able to address it in the future. However, this created a problem for us, we were now gonna have to move the last day of the school to Thursday. And I don't think anybody in this universe wanted that after our last board meeting, where it was made very clear we were already late enough. So I did an hours analysis, so that I could understand what we had available to us, and the limiting factor for us remains the grade seven and eight. Last year, we were quite literally to the minute, we did make an adjustment this year that allowed for an additional three minutes a day. Which led to the fact that we would have an extra six point something hours for the year, so we need nine hundred and ninety hours for grade seven and eight. It's less for the lower grade levels, but it's nine ninety for seven and eight. And by the way, that's not just hours present on our property, that's what we call instructional hours. So it can't include advisory interventions, it can't count, or sorry, it can count advisory, I'm sorry, if it's actually advisory. So in other words, it's not a homeroom, where you're just doing administrative stuff, but you're actually advising kids on academics, that would count if we add it. Can't count recess, you can't count homeroom, you can't count lunchtime, and you can't count passing times. As a result of that, we really had one extra day available to us, the six hours, what is it, six point two-two-five? That allowed me to reach out to the chair of the board and say, this option's available to you. And with hours, you don't need special permission from the state, that was the other options we could apply for emergency. The problem with the emergency request is they have to be in by May, we're obviously well past May. Secondly, it can only be approved by the Board of Ed, the New Hampshire Board of Ed. They had already had their June meetings, so our next opportunity would have been sometime in July. A little late to be finding out whether they were okay with it or not, would have been asking for forgiveness rather than permission, so. Anyway, we used the six hours, the chair approved that, we used the six hours to end the school year on Wednesday as it was intended to be, and so. That was the outcome of that emergency day evaluation.
So, and that also took into consideration three hours for the early release. So we were down to, I think we only were, with using Friday, we were like, was it twenty? Twenty-seven minutes or something like that extra?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, like I said, it's six point two-two-five, and that point two-two-five we don't need to use. So we have a tiny bit extra, less than an hour.
So anyway, so even if we went to minutes, we were at the minutes, and that's what we had to do, so we had to change to minutes. In order to say that we successfully completed the year, because we really only went a hundred and seventy-nine days.
Hundred seventy-nine and a half days. Right?
Yeah, I think so.
No, we went a hundred and seventy-eight and a half days, a hundred and seventy-eight and a half days.
Yes, hundred percent, a hundred and seventy-eight.
Is what we ended up doing this year.
Yes, so we didn't even do the days. And we, we discussed this, I think Rob put together that day, explained to parents what we were doing, and then that we did have some things that we were out of our control this year. Extra days that we agreed to with workshops in the due for Thanksgiving, plus the election day. And then we also had the emergency days and snow days, so.
I put all of that in explanation, and then I also laid it out for Debbie Omer, who had asked why we were still in school, so I, I gave that response to them as well, and laid the map for them.
So, yeah, so this now, now it ties into, we did have a calendar, I did ask Rob to, you know, it was suggested, I saw several suggestions about that one day that does not have, it wouldn't take us out of any contractual issues. Because checking the contract, the student placement day just has to be a day for the teachers to place the students. It doesn't have to be on that particular day that we have it. So if we did move that to, to the end of the year, we could have our last day without snow days on June twelfth. At least for next year, just to not have, not to get to the point that we're at right now. I mean, we can adjust, we can make other adjustments when we look at, you know, future calendars, but this, this is, I believe, five days earlier than we have this year. So it wouldn't be.
Yeah, it would take eight additional days to get to the last Wednesday, like we did this year, so we'd have to have eight emergencies next year.
And we wouldn't get to, we would not, we wouldn't do this again. Anyway, I don't know if people, how people feel about that, that could be like one little adjustment we can make that ends the year earlier, or doesn't go into that next week, June twelfth.
I think that for kind of an immediate adjustment right now, I would support that, it is the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. And so I would question if maybe we could reach out to Koran and ask if they, they, they do have school that day, but if it's an early release, maybe we could mimic their schedule with an early release for that day. As sort of, rather than going from having the day off historically to not having it off at all.
I think that sort of is the same type of thing as the Dear Feel Fair Day. It's like, if people are gonna take it off, like not everybody would take off that Friday before Memorial, but if people are gonna take off, like the Dear Feel Fair, some people take it off, some people don't take it off, some people take the Thursday off, so, I mean.
Yeah, I would just be curious if, if Koran has it, has it as early released or not. That would be, I would just be curious of that, which I can always follow them up. You know, this one thing is they don't put, mark early releases on their calendar, like they have early releases, but they're just marked as school days on their calendar. So, it's a mystery what days are, so I would just be curious of that, I support moving that day otherwise into the year. I also would be interested in, I don't know, the middle school schedule is sort of like this, it seems like we're always, it's always being adjusted and trying to fit different models and stuff, but it is interesting to me that the seventh and eighth graders are in this building the same amount of time as the rest of the school. And because of stuff that I assume cannot be counted as instructional hours, that other ones don't have, so they're at nine ninety-six, point two-two-five. But if we go down to like third and fourth grades, they're, you know, their hours are one thousand twenty-nine, right? So it's like, some of our grades do have a large.
Like I said, the limiting factor is seventh and eighth, you could, you could cancel the month of June for some of them. Yeah, so without a doubt, I mean.
They have a higher requirement, but they also seem to have like a lower number of.
The biggest difference is recess, by far the biggest difference. Grades K to six can count recess. So up to a thirty-minute recess per day, so that's the big difference here between them and the seventh and eighth graders that can't count recess, which they don't have anyway.
They have, they have a very, the seventh and eighth grade do not really have recess.
They have a thirty-minute lunch recess, most of them after about ten minutes go outside.
So it's like thirty minutes is for lunch and recess.
Versus fifty minutes for lunch.
Their kids get fifty, okay, so.
So I would, I would be, I mean, I'm not opposed to going to an hours format, but obviously there's a couple of things, there's some adjustments that obviously need to be made to that, that schedule. And I don't know if that means that the whole entire school has to start five minutes early, but more is, like, is there the intervention period that somebody has, is that not, does that count?
It does count.
It does count.
It does count, so what we would do is we would, if, if this is something down the road we decided to do, it has not been decided yet, please at home, don't panic. What we're talking about is possibly starting the day five minutes earlier, so you look at our kids, they're sitting on the bus for five minutes anyway, waiting to get off to come into the building. Parents are lined up and out onto the highway by the time, you know, we're letting cars start to drop off, so five minutes early doesn't seem like a problem to us to start early, and that would then add considerably more time to the grade seven and eight calendar. What we'd say to the seventh and eighth graders is those five additional minutes need to be added into instructional time throughout the day, whether that's making one block longer, or adding a minute to each of the five blocks, whatever it is that they do, doesn't matter, it just has to be instructional time. The grades K through six would make decisions with their administration about what they're gonna do with that time. Does it make more sense for them to have more homeroom time, does it make more sense for them to have more recess or lunch, does it make more sense for them to have more instructional time? That'll be something that they have to talk about, they don't need it.
Right.
Grade seven and eight needs it, but we don't wanna start the day differently for different groups of kids, so we'll say that this bell, the day begins. And it will just be five minutes earlier that that time happens for everybody.
How, how do the blocks, how would the blocks be adjusted, because they have to all have that UA block that's the same amount of time?
Which counts as well.
Yeah, I know, what happens that?
We'd have to work on a schedule, this is, this is five minutes, I think probably one of the easiest things to do is to say, let's make the intervention block at the end of the day five minutes longer. But that doesn't mean that's the right answer, just because it's easy doesn't mean it's right, so I think if this was something that the board said, let's, let's do this, let's move forward in this direction, this is what we wanna do, let's extend the day. We're only allowed to extend by five more minutes because of teacher contract, that is the limiting factor of their contract, that can only be a certain length of day, and we're five minutes shorter than that length right now. By adding that five minutes, we truly add another seventeen or so hours to the grade seven and eight over the course of a year. Which gives you so much more flexibility, like you were just mentioning an early release day. If we did that, we'd only have three hours left available to us, right? So just keep that in mind, every time we talk about adjusting that calendar down in any way, it makes that margin of error so much smaller, but if we add that five minutes, we get a much bigger margin of error.
So, so if we, you are sure that the buses are there five minutes early, they always are.
I've had multiple conversations with the main office about where they thought it would be best if we were to add up to five minutes, and they said at the beginning of the day made the most sense. We could split it if we wanted to, we could say fi- uh, three minutes earlier and two minutes later, and not impact athletics, I mean, I know that's the big concern after school is we don't wanna impact athletics. Two minutes isn't gonna make a difference, that's what I'm saying, we could split it in half if we wanted to. But nobody had a problem in the office when I was talking to them about, what does this look like, what would the five minutes be, there was no concerns about busing. We're the, really the biggest concern there is just, you know, the time to get ready in the morning, treats by five minutes, so, and that can be impactful, we wanna minimize that. Some people probably use every minute of the time they have in the morning to get ready, so.
Yeah, so I, I guess, so my whole thing is, is like, I think it's a good thing, I think we should look at an hours-based model, and what does that look like, what does our calendar potentially look like, what's the best? I don't, I guess I don't want us to, like, disrupt a schedule just to, like, try to get kids out four days earlier, I mean, we are, we did already bring it back, it's pretty impressive too. Currently, June twelfth, obviously that's pending additional snow days. But if we go to like an hours model, does that then allow that, do we not make up snow days at that point?
You go to the point where the board decides to go to.
Okay.
In other words, so if, as long as you make it past the nine hundred ninety hours for grade seven and eight, you have checked the box, and what the state requires you to do. You as a board have to decide how much beyond that makes sense to you as a board.
And, and I just wanna cut, like, you know, it's, it's like one of those things where it's like five minutes every day, and it's like, okay, but that adds up to several days at the end of the year, and it's like, but does that extra couple minutes every day actually academically add up to days? Now, granted, I don't think we should be going to school this late at all, like, it's excessive at this point, and it was all cer- it was circumstances this year. But, I mean, a lot of people said our kids weren't doing anything for the last several weeks, my kids were still doing projects last week, I mean, so there was still.
I would agree. There was a petition going on last week, I'm not sure. I don't think there's a ton of value to our heatwave week.
No, I agree a hundred percent, but, like, there still was, like, positive things happening, or at least my children.
So up until, for us up until Friday.
But that's where you would have had that ability as a board to say, we don't see there being a lot of educational value in those last three days.
I agree.
But at the same time, feeling confident that minutes-wise, hours-wise, you had checked the essential box.
Yep.
So that would have given you that flexibility, I'm not suggesting you're ever going to need to do this again. Our hope is to have built in this buffer through other mechanisms. But I'm just saying, right now, if we had had a two-day water cancellation, I could have, I'd say do one of those.
Right, alright.
Yeah, so I guess Rob, we can approve this calendar and then have Rob come back to us in the week with just more information in August on what an hours base would apply potentially?
Are we talking about changing the calendar for next year beyond this?
Um, I don't know if it would necessarily change the calendar, but it would allow us more flexibility to end the school year for next year.
Yes, so we could save the same proposed calendar, but if we got into a position where there were several snow days, we might be able to shorten it.
I honestly think that's how most districts still operate, they schedule a hundred and eighty days, that's not all, I've seen a couple schedule a hundred and seventy-eight and stuff, but I think most will schedule a hundred and eighty. They're using the hours more when the problems arise. Okay, we're gonna go to June twenty-fifth, that's insane, like, let's not do that.
Right.
That's when they have that ability to say, okay, let's knock off one, two, three days, because we've reached the hours threshold.
Okay.
But most calendars will still say a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, so you wanna make a motion then to accept this calendar as is with the student placement day at the end of the year? So that our last scheduled day would be June twelfth without not counting snow days?
And that is the only change on this calendar, was that student placement day was.
Debbie asked me to write a calendar where the student placement day was.
So, I move, we accept the amended twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar to move the student placement date to June, the very end of the year, which would be June fifteenth. With our final school day being on Friday, June twelfth.
All contingent upon snow or emergency days.
And if that is contingent upon snow and emergency days.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion?
So the, the twenty-second will now be a full day at school, but I, I would like, I am curious to go around and potentially discuss, discuss an early release for that in the future.
I will reach out, get you an answer, probably within a day or two, I would think, unless nobody's working, which I don't know.
Alrighty, so Katrina?
Yep.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie. Eric? So at least we are getting out now June twelfth. Without snow days, that's, that's a lot better, I really think this, this current year, was it going to be June nineteenth?
Yes.
That's five extra days, so that should make everybody happy, alright. Oh, okay, what else were we adding? Correspondence. Did any correspond? I don't think so, I don't think we did.
It was quiet two weeks.
Okay.
In that way, in that way.
Alright, and that community calendar?
We sent.
We sent the eighth grade graduate, okay, or ninth, July, okay.
Yep.
But we should, if we're not gonna have any of this stuff going back.
Yes, um, so what we put up in July will have to be coming out at the end of July. So that, at that point, we'd be talking about the start of the school year, I think. So I don't know what else, anybody else thinks we wanna add?
Do we have anything new that's, anything that we wanna talk about? Anything we're doing over the summer, projects?
gonna talk about how I met with the paving company, so that's a possibility, if, if the board approves.
Okay.
Um, this, that it's gonna be a instance of us using our fund, our capital improvement fund, like we talked about at our district meeting, for doing some pavement repairs, so it's a good, um, bit of information for the town to have. So I think we could throw that in there if this gets approved.
I, I, I think you guys know what you're doing, right? After all this, you'll know what you wanna put in there. Um, all right, all right, committee updates.
Policy, we need to look.
You need to do the homework policy.
Yeah, we need to just schedule.
Before school starts.
I know, it's so hard, we will, we'll, we'll get something on the calendar before we leave.
Okay.
Eric, do you wanna stick around a few minutes?
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll schedule one.
Fridays are so tough this year.
All right, all right, so you're going to maybe the day we do our hearing, you're gonna make your, you need to along.
Come a little bit early, yeah, I know, we really need to try to schedule off this, like, kind of like a large chunk of time to, to get through a lot of things, so.
All right, facilities committee.
So, uh, I met with Manchester Paving on Monday, got a little bit of clarification on some items that, that, uh, we had questions on as a facilities committee. Um, what I'm proposing, 'cause Jess was not able to attend that, zones one, two, and three, as were presented to us in the original proposal from Manchester Paving, um, through the process of discussing, discussing it with, uh, with Bob was the gentleman's name, the, he offered to do zones one, two, and three as presented to us for the total of fifty-eight thousand dollars, so he adjusted the price a little bit. Um, so I am comfortable going forward with that as it was presented, uh, and I have to make a motion and let the rest of the board, obviously let you guys weigh in.
Could you explain to us where the zones are?
Yes, so zone one is basically the horseshoe and up by the annex, that was presented to us, it's just needing some crack fill, oh, and that also goes up to just about the do not enter sign where kids get off, where the parents drop them off in the morning. Um, it needs a lot of crack filling, but he said that pavement probably has ten years plus of life left in it if we keep up with the crack filling. Zone two is just about at the watershed, going around the back of the school, handful of years ago, some more propane tanks were added, the trench there is in really bad shape.
It is, yeah.
There's a couple of spots out back by some manhole covers that are getting beat up by the plow, he, he basically wants to adjust the grade, and he pointed out an area where the pavement comes up against the concrete where all the kids leave the school to go to the playground, and it's actually not level, and he wants to adjust it, so it'll be, you know, the grade will match the concrete. Um, and that goes around the school, uh, over to, well, pretty much over to the end of a playground area. Zone three would be the hill coming up that we know is in rough shape, and it's good, it would be resurfacing the entirety of the upper parking lot, so by the sugar shack where, where the, uh, car drop-off happens, and then there was a couple other things that was gonna, he wants to add some pavement, just a small section of pavement to allow additional parking spot at the SAU, um, kinda like where that hand, handrail fence is going down the hill.
Well, I sneak in every day.
Yeah, and, uh, and it, and he would clean up this, the area, that middle school, that where that concrete is uneven and jagged there coming over the SAU, so, and then there was a little walkway going to the sugar shack side door.
I asked him for that.
Yeah, so that's, it was as presented, and he adjusted the price to do zones one, two, and three for fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Does that include striping the upper parking lot?
No, he, 'cause we had talked, he said you had a striker, someone that you already...
We have somebody else we use, I just, I know one of the quotes included striping, and I couldn't remember if that was them or not, so, so we'll have somebody else come in and re-stripe the upper parking lot.
That was a savings that like cut it out.
Yeah, that was a savings of seventy-two hundred dollars over what was originally presented to us. Um, so I'm gonna make the motion that we accept the proposal from Manchester Paving for zones one, two, and three as presented in his original proposal for the adjusted sum of fifty-eight thousand dollars, and this would be paid for through our capital improvement and building fund.
Great, do you have a second? Okay, okay, discussion, what would they start?
So he, I told him that I would be bringing this to the board Wednesday, and he's, and we'd have an answer for him tonight with the anticipation of getting it done for the start of school, that would be up to Rob to be able to get, to get that in from, to shore, shore up those days.
Right, and just to note, the area doesn't touch us down by where the buses park, it's at zone four, but they felt that that had more life left in that area, so.
Yeah.
That's something we could put out for a few years.
Good, great.
How many, how many estimates did we get?
Three.
Three.
We had, we had received three estimates, they were all slightly different, based, based on, they, based on Rob's meetings with them and discussions with them, there was, uh, everyone presented the product a little bit differently.
And just to clarify, what's our dollar per, for sealed bids?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
For sealed bids?
Right.
Um, I don't know if it says.
All bids are sealed bids.
Okay, yeah.
Quotes are less than ten thousand, bids are more than ten thousand.
Okay, thank you.
But the board, and the policies, if the board can override that.
Yep, so I, I will amend this motion to note that we are overriding our policy for this, for this purpose.
And I wanna make it clear that we did get three quotes for this word, correct?
Right. Okay, alrighty, Katrina?
Yes.
Eric?
I did amend that, so.
Oh, oh, sorry, yes, I'm, oh, okay, thank you, thanks, okay, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes, great, that's wonderful, so, and then you'll coordinate, because I know we usually have, um, summer school and different things, so there's traffic here.
I'm gonna definitely see if we can do it like a couple of weeks in early August as opposed to during July, when we do have, not to mention the police department's getting their paving done in the first two weeks of July, so I just, I don't think it's good for us to overlap, but that one was cut down.
And we just approve people to use our parking lot, so just, yeah, just double check those dates.
Yeah, that's a good point, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, food service committee, I don't know, well, we should be fine, we'll see what happens, if there's a big issue with the freezer.
Right, right now we have a meeting, it's gonna be in August, so.
Right.
I'll definitely send you guys an email just with an update on what we're finding out of the freezer as well as what we find out about the heating units and the gymnasium. The gymnasium, it's a complete replacement, it's a gargantuan number, so that'll be something that will require a lot of conversation. We did not have heat this last winter, it did get quite chilly in there, but we could probably make it work again, you know, we need to wait for a warrant article or something like that, but I'm hoping it's something that can be really good.
Okay, education committee?
Nothing.
Okay, homeless committee, no, not until, I think it's October, um, transportation committee?
Nothing.
Athletic committee, we are going to have a meeting, we have to schedule one, um, just to finish up the season and then plan for the fall, and to see if, are we having people coming forward?
Yeah, we put out, we put out for every one of the positions that are in the teacher's contract CBA, which includes all head level positions.
Okay.
So we put that out internally, and we've received some feedback, I think, I guess some, April got some, other people got them, but we, we have a sheet where we're tracking what people are asking that they wanna do, none of them are surprises, like, drama's still the same drama, so we haven't seen any real surprises there, but, um, if we do have where there's more than one that wants it, then we'll have to talk about whether we conduct interviews or what we do, so.
So does it look like we're having athletic people, people coming forward to, to fill the athletic positions?
I haven't had any soccer, but I was aware.
Okay, all right, all right, so, um, anything with the dam?
It's there. Uh, well, we went down, we did another cleanup, um, it was amazing how much debris had built up, yeah, just through the window, uh, the last time we went down, it was a lot of junk we had to pull out of there, so, uh, if the, if the water level drops, which I think it might start doing now that we're getting warmer and less rain, we'll actually have to go back down inside because a lot of debris made it over the edges down in there, but the other day when we were out, it was raging in there, and we were like, we're not going down in there, so, when it slows down though, we'll go back in and get the stuff out of the bottom of it, but it's still well below the opening for the water to go down the pipe to the downstream, so we're still, we're still good, it's just, I was shocked how much debris had built up in just two weeks.
So we don't anticipate anything related to the work we're going to be doing?
We're not even mowing it right now, what we, what we talked about was this fall going in and, um, maybe trying to chop it back, um, we're gonna try and see what mechanisms we might be able to get our hands on and do, but, 'cause a lot of the trees, it's shocking how fast, like, the maples and stuff are coming up, so it's more than weed whacker or lawn mower, this is more like, um, bushmaster, you know, so, that kind of a thing, so we're gonna see if we can do something in the fall just so it's cleaned up, but we're not gonna do it now, there's just no sense, and the ticks are insane out there. Um, Craig and I walked out to the beaver dam just to see what was going on out there, by the way, nothing, it doesn't look like there's any activity, but we came back and each of us was pulling ticks off of us left and right, it was all over the place, so, we're like, we're not mowing right now.
Yeah, so, as far as the timeline for, for that whole process, I think we were supposed to be getting things to the Army Corps of Engineers or something?
The engineers are supposed to be working on permitting, plans, finalizing, remember there were, was it sixty percent or ninety percent, I can't remember what it was?
Right.
It was some percentage of plans, they gotta finalize those plans, get all those permits and everything, when I talked to them last, which is now probably about a month, um, they said they were gonna be on track for next summer, that's when the construction should, should happen, is next summer, so we're on track for that.
So we don't know, like, if there's any updates of any of the permits?
No, like, and, and they haven't sent me a bill for anything, so, but at some point they will start sending bills, but we should be able to start charging the grant now, the money is ours, it's in an account where you go us, to send them invoices and get reimbursed and stuff.
Okay, so future board meetings, well, we know that we did, um, we're not having meetings in July unless there's an emergency, but we may have a hearing on July twenty-third, right? Okay, all right, other, have any other?
We, we had, uh, discussed a Cole Brown student.
Yes.
A student going to Cole Brown and not public, so we have to.
Oh, thank you for.
I was just about to say, I was waiting to see if I had other.
All right, um, would you like to make a motion?
So I move, we, uh, accept the student as presented to us to attend Cole Brown for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and this is a, a ninth grader moving into the district.
I think it was nine, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes, um, that's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second, discussion? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
And Jess, Katrina, Kyle, and Debbie, yes, all right. Cool, does it?
Yeah, if, I don't know where they find some of these things, but people find stuff on the internet.